First and foremost, I just want to take the opportunity to officially introduce Christine Snerrier, our Budget Officer. I think I mentioned her once in the work session right after she had originally started. She comes to us from several, close to 15 years' experience, both at Gettysburg College and then most recently at Saint Mary's University. And all of the experiences in accounting and the public.
Welcome Christine.
Hopefully it'll be a seamless transition, but that is not the year to start right as we have been in the midst of...
Hit the ground running.
Hit the ground running, correct. Very true. The reason that we're here this evening is to concentrate and just do a high-level summary, review of where we are right now in our current fiscal year, which is fiscal year 15. Provide it, again, a summarized report. And on your report, you will notice several columns. We put fiscal year 14 actual...
Michelle, could you hold your microphone a wee bit closer, please?
Sure. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
We included fiscal year 14 actual, which the numbers will look very familiar. It's what we just recently reviewed when we presented our CAFR. And the middle column is our estimated actuals for... I'm sorry, clear to the right is our estimated actuals for fiscal year 15, where we think we're going to end the year by the time we get to June 30. And then in the middle, we've included the column just to remind everybody of what our information in our current fiscal year 15 budget. When we take a look first at revenue, property tax revenue, for the most part, everybody knows that that is our real estate tax revenue, and it's also our personal corporate property revenue. And right now, we're anticipating ending the year at $26.7 million, which is slightly over our budget amount of $25.9 million. That amount is due to our real estate assessable values being slightly higher than what we anticipated at this point last year. So that's a good thing. Next, state and county share taxes. And in this category, it's an important category. It includes income taxes, admissions and amusement taxes, hotel motel tax, state aid for police protection, as well as our state aid for fire. And we originally budgeted $3.58 million, and we're looking to end the year at about $3.69. So again, a little bit better than what we originally anticipated in the budget. Next is licensing and permits. And we see the, probably out of all the areas, the most growth in this area over our fiscal year 15 budget. And it is specifically related to two new programs that were recently approved, and that is in the area of code enforcement, changes in the residential licensee program, and a newly adopted vacant structures program. The majority of the rest of our revenue is fairly close to budget. So in summary, our revenues were budgeted in the general fund at $39.2 million, and we're estimating to end the year at $40.8. Any questions on any of the revenue?
Fines and forfeiture, that's down?
Slightly about...
Speed cameras?
About $49,000, yes. And again, it's not because of the number of citations that we're currently issuing. It continues to be that the number of citations that are outstanding are older, and the length and the duration of those are growing. So we've estimated to have some more allowance for uncollectible accounts in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess also, just, I'll back up one second. The transfer from other funds, we do anticipate that that's going to be over budget by $140,000. That entire amount is the amounts that we have granted to the Maryland Theater. We're showing it as revenue because part of the funding came from property management due to the sale of our armory on Willard Street. The other portion, $100,000 match for the seating, came out of CIP contingency. So both of those programs have been finished. We've actually expended the money, and you'll see that likewise as an increase in our expenditures. So we've got the funding from those other sources to cover this. Expenses, again, for the most part, the expenses are very summarized. First is wages, and the wages includes base salaries as well as overtime and any payouts when somebody leaves or vacation. So any, when people retire, if they have vacation on the books, we pay that out. Wages are anticipated to be about 1.8% over budget, or $317,000. The majority of that is due to overtime. We're currently trending at about $267,000 over our budget in overtime, and that's primarily in the areas of public safety. Additionally, in our budget, we included vacancy savings in the amount of $250,000 across the general fund. And as of current day, we do not anticipate that we're going to reach that level. And that's because most of our positions are filled, whereas in the past, we've experienced that we had longer durations of unfilled positions, especially in the areas of HPD.
Yeah, I was going to say, the key on the vacancy savings, not that we're trying to promote vacancy savings, but is tied to police and the vacancies there and how long it takes us to fill those positions. Well, we've really made a concentrated effort this year to fill those positions, so that's why Michelle's saying we don't think we'll achieve the projected savings of $250 in the current year.
Next is benefits. We're anticipating ending the year at about 2.9, I'm sorry, $9.2 million, and our budget was $9.1 million. The variance there is two items, the first and the majority of which, $110,000, is our retiree insurance. Again, just a reminder, retiree insurance, one general fund side only. And then the other portion that's over budget is that we did not include at the time we did the budget enough in payouts for sick leave. So again, when somebody leaves, not only do we pay out their vacation balances, but we also pay out their sick leave balances. And that's about the other approximate $75,000 overage. The next category is wage and overhead allocations. And this category, there's several different things occurring in here. But when we have staff work and do work for projects, whether it's in the CIP fund, we allocate labor costs out of the general fund and over to the project. We also have instances where our parks and recreational group helps out and assists at the golf course, so we transfer monies, again, out from the general fund into other areas and to other funds. And right now, we're anticipating that we're going to be a little bit under budget, but for the most part, the work that we're doing is work within our operating budgets. The only other big account, variance-wise, is in the category of other expenditures. And just kind of to give a quick synopsis of all the different things that roll into the other expenditures line, we've got some advertising and printing, rental expenses for things that we lease and/or rent, all of maintenance and repairs, that includes all of our contracts and/or if we have to call somebody on site even when we have no contract, all of our vehicle operating expenses, professional development includes seminars, includes things like sending HPD staff to K-9 training out of state for a couple weeks at a time, communications expenses, Neighborhood's First programs, property abatement expense. And again, some of that expense may be a little over budget, but with property abatements, then we also see the offsetting increase on the revenue side. Incentives and a variety of our different public functions events, all the expenditures related to that, all roll into this one big category. So this, this category looks to be about $472,000 over budget, and actually, part of that is offset by additional revenue of $140,000. That's where we're going to see the expenditures that we've given, the monies that we have actually paid out to the Maryland Theater, and that's the difference of the $140. We also, right now, our vehicle operating expenses are looking to be about $100,000 over budget, and that's due to two things. One has to do with some fire equipment repairs on apparatus and equipment, and the other one is in the area of snow removal. We had a couple vehicles we had to work on recently. Professional development and all related training costs are looking to trend about $50,000 over budget. And the area of communication expenses is about $130,000 over budget in this category. However, there is an offset in the allocation line above that nets that back to zero. It's in two different places. Materials and supplies in that category, we are slightly anticipating being over budget by about $60,000 or 2.9%. Again, most of the things in this area include utility costs, electricity, fuel, but the primary variances that we're expecting in that area have to do with some purchases for HPD for some tasers. And again, we have offsetting revenue greater than budget that we've included above to help cover that cost, as well as some operating supplies for parks, and we do have some additional revenues, again, to help offset that above. I know that was kind of a really quick overview on some of these categories. Is there questions or more details that you're needing on any of the line items?
Is it reasonable to expect by the end of the year that wages, overtime, is going to increase considering the severity of the winter? I'm talking primarily of public works and parks, I guess.
Well, I think within our current projections of the $267,000, I think for the most part, we're going to be close. We could, of course, because we did the projections several weeks ago in order to prepare this document, and since that time, we've had a couple of snow events. So there is going to be some overtime, but hopefully not too much more than $267,000 over budget.
Hopefully so. Thank you.
Hopefully.
So just to summarize to the general audience here, from my own understanding, even though in the current year, you're seeing a $601,487 deficit, given the additional revenues, et cetera, at the end of it all, you project a $260,000 surplus.
Correct. Correct. And one of the things I do want to discuss, just...
Go ahead, Michelle.
So even though it looks, when you look at our current year incoming revenues, and you look at currently in this year what we are expending, it looks like we are going to have a shortfall. But again, it's for items that we did include in our budget. There are several different projects, and if we pulled out our budget book, we could walk through those. But we had anticipated and approved that we were going to use general fund balance reserves in our current year, up to $588,500 in the CIP fund. And then, give me just a second, the rest is for our, a variety of Invest Heggars Town programs. And just real quick, that would include city center residency, citywide residency, city center rental, and our first third grants. And we are seeing, which is a positive and a good thing, those programs were put in place to help. We are actually seeing that our commitments are there, and we've actually expended more than we thought that we would in the current year.
We're victims of our own success.
Exactly. So the shortfall that you're seeing is a reflection of that. And if you look on the summary report, I do show the $601,487, the way we need to show it for accounting purposes, but right below that, you'll see that $933,576 has already been approved for specific projects. So when we adjust for that, we would end the year at $332,000 surplus, net surplus. Thank you.
Mr. Brubaker?
Well, I'll start with the general summary. I think there's things I'm concerned about in the line items, but the, it's not really a deficit because we have a fund balance that's over what our policy is, significantly over. We are in a budget crisis right now, and we will be for two more years because of the property tax assessments. We planned, we calculated, to use a portion of that. So this is going according to what we planned, and really, we are to the good because we planned and we approved using that fund balance. And for accounting reasons, they've showed the fund balance transfer as expenditures. In actuality, they are calculated revenues, you know, to fund particular expenditures that we had planned on, so we are...
And the goal of those expenditures, I would just like to hear that from people.
We are within, we are ahead of ourselves by nature. According to what we've approved, we're actually ahead of ourselves if the estimates are correct, you know, the estimates for the year. Michelle, that's the way I understand it.
Correct.
And so I think deficit is a term of accounting art. The city is not in deficit. These are planned expenditures. We maintain a very, very healthy fund balance, and this is a very good financial report. It is not alarming. However, I will go to those things that alarm me for the future years. I do think that it's going, you know, as we said last spring, it's really hard to control things like overtime and what I call lapse, that's the vacancy allowance, and lapse is the term of art for that. And the overtime, no matter how fully you fund the public safety sections, there's, overtime runs over. I mean, we said that the speed cameras would decrease the need for revenue because police officers wouldn't have to go to court. We said keeping staffing levels high in the fire and police departments would decrease the level of overtime. It has not. That's, that happens, it's, that's, it happens. And I think unless we find a way to control some of these things, we're going to be in difficult shape if we, in the next two years, don't budget those items realistically or if we can't manage them. The lapse, again, I respect, and we should, we've kept the public safety departments fully staffed. And that makes it, they're such a large part of the city government, so the implications for next year are maybe we shouldn't be budgeting that much lapse or that little overtime, which is going to make it all the harder to avoid a tax increase. I think this city cannot afford a tax increase. I don't know where we're going to go, but seeing these trends, I know it's going to be difficult, but we're not competitive, we won't be competitive. So I hope something can be done along those lines. And the final concern I have is on, that's not covered here, and I've talked to staff about this, but we have talked about a lot of different projects that are either not in the CIP, well, first of all, I'll start to say, there's no money left over to fund, to fund capital projects, to fund big projects with current revenues. Whatever they are, they're going to have to be funded, to me, out of bonds. I can calculate, just very quickly, probably forgetting a few, anywhere from, making a range, anywhere from $15 to $30 million that could be things people want to do in the next five years, just for projects we've talked about. And again, I'm probably forgetting a few. So, you know, that's a bond expenditure of anywhere, you know, of $3 to $6 million a year. Can we afford that? I think we're going to have to look into that in this coming budget session, so we don't wind up improving large sums for lower priority projects early on and then not be able to afford, when something really good, when a Maryland Theater comes down the line, not have the debt capacity. So I'll just throw that out there. I didn't ask for that tonight. I just think we need to be able to judge what our capacities are and then weigh projects that come to us against that. So there's a lot of possible big-ticket items, and we're not going to be able to fit them within this operating budget. They're going to have to come out of the capital budget. And as I said before, I think in the, in the operating budget, we're going to have to go, we've done a good job not doing what other municipalities have done. We funded our pension plans, we funded our good benefit plans. We're going to have to look really closely at what we can do, and we're going to have to look at coming down closer to our policy level for fund balance. And I hope we can see a budget that gets us through two years, not just one year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do think that it's important to point out that for these projects we're talking about, we were talking about being victims of our own success, the goal of all of these capital projects that you're saying the city's contributing to is to increase the value of our properties. That's where we continue to struggle, that's where we need to make it up when it comes to the next triennial reassessment. We want them to come and see a city that's being invested in, not only by the city, but by the private sector as well. So hopefully, we will meet our obligations but continue to make investments. Anyone else have any? Mr. Alshire?
A couple of comments, and maybe to expand a little on Marty's comments. One is I share those similar concerns, especially as they're associated on the expense side, so I won't go back over them. But for me, I think maybe the easiest way to understand the $933,000 roughly is, it's an investment. It is really no different than having two choices that you would have in your own personal household. You either borrow funds, like we do with the bond, to acquire those assets that are, you know, your long-term assets, or you pay for them through your existing finances. And this is one of two that we're using. And, you know, a good share of these funds are to address those very things that folks drive around and walk around and talk about and see in this community every day and say, "Why doesn't somebody do something about this degradation?" And that's what this money has done. It is taking money out of a pot that has been created through payment over years by the citizens and investing in turning around that degradation. And that has a significant impact because I believe our report on constant yield we just got this week would indicate that we need to stop the slide downward on the decrease in assessable tax base. I believe over the last six years, and now if you add this year in, it will be about 19, 20.6 cents of total value basically on the tax rate. And that's by doing nothing, but simply watching that decline occur through degradation. And my last point that I would make is, we're stepping up with the public funds, both in reserves and capital borrowing, to address and change that course. And I think that in that effort, we have to recognize that there are two objectives that are going to accomplish this. One is, we're going to have to spend money. We're going to have to spend some money to address these things. But we're not going to be able to buy our ways out, buy our way out of it. I've said that before. We're going to have to prioritize those funding on projects like Marty talks about, and we're going to have to legislate. And you can see on the revenue side, some of those legislative actions taking hold to increase revenues to address that same thing, that degradation that has occurred over time.
And I might point out, councilmember...
So we need to fund and we need to legislate our way through this and pick those items on that course ahead.
The degradation you speak of is primarily on private property.
I wouldn't argue that at all.
Your point being that we are trying to use private, public money to invest in property that has otherwise been private, whether we're buying the property, trying to demolish blighting influences, and our goal being to get it back on the market so that it is a more positively contributing member of our taxable base.
And I think it's...
And that's the slide that you're talking about. And again, the degradation, it really comes down to personal responsibility on the part of property owners.
And I think it's key...
That's what our focus has been on.
I think it's key that we're doing that both through a public process, and we're using public funds to identify new private partners that actually want to improve the conditions.
To make money, to make money off their increased value of their properties. That's what it's all about. Anyone else have any? Mr. Muntzen?
Michelle, this mid-year review is a good piece of work, and I'm sure, I'm sure it was a lot of work as well. But as Marty said, the important thing here, I think, is it gives us a clear roadmap where we have to go in the future. And it shows us how careful we have to be when we go in the future. So thank you for it.
One last comment. There's no enterprise fund portion of this. I would like at least some type of update on where we stand with the enterprise funds. I know that staff works diligently to ensure that those funds remain as solvent as we reasonably can expect, but I don't want to be back in here in another conversation in April again with the figures that we've received in the past. And I'd like to get at least some reassurance that the legislative actions that we took to address those issues are starting to see positive results as well.
Mr. Brubaker?
Are we aware of any issues with the enterprise funds? We're not going into any detail. We're okay?
We look...
I'm presuming we are, and you'd come to us, but...
Yes. And it looks like, for the first time in several years, that the general fund subsidy needed for the golf course to get us through the year is going to be right on budget. It's going to be right at $200,000. In the past, that hasn't always been the case. It's been significantly higher, so good job, good job to Rodney and his crew.
Now, they're doing a good job. It's frustrating that that only gets us down to the planned deficit.
The other funds, electric, water, and wastewater, all quite truthfully are really close to the projections at the time they did the cost study. Electric and water are projecting to be at a surplus. Wastewater, this year, is looking to be trending exactly where we thought it was going to be, which is still at a current year deficit. But again, it's in the first year of that rate study, and we, that was the reason that we did such a higher percentage. But we can bring a summary back?
The next year will be the second year of the five-year rate schedule that you put a year ago for water and wastewater. So we're not thinking we need to make any recommended changes to that rate schedule.
I know it's in here, but I see Mike in the audience. Is the water line from Williamsport, is that in the planned, within the rate structure that we approved?
The study portion.
It's the study portion?
We're three years out with the actual process.
Well, but it's within the, it's three years out, but it's within what we planned.
Any other questions or comments on this update?
Good job. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. We will be adjourned until 7 o'clock. We'll call this regular session to order, and the first thing on our agenda is the invocation given by Mr. Muntzen, followed by the pledging flag. Please rise as you are able.
We meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements? We are operating... Announcements? We are operating under the rules of procedure adopted on September 24th, 2013. The use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to our city clerk, and should include a copy for the clerk for the inclusion in the official record. Our meeting scheduled, just to review, next week, March 3rd, there will be no meeting. On Tuesday, March 10, we'll have the State of the City at 7:15 at Hager Hall. We will convene here then for a work session at 4:00 PM, followed that night by the State of the City presentation here in the council chambers at 6:30 PM. We welcome everybody in the public to attend. Of course, we hope everybody in the public attends all of our meetings on a regular basis. Our next work session would be on the 17th and the 24th of March, and then our regular session, we have the fifth Tuesday, will be at 7:00 on the 31st. Any questions about our schedule for March? At this time, we'll have citizen comments. I believe we have one citizen who would like to speak, Mary Haynes. Please come on up.
I am she, Mary W. Haynes, 27 Laurel Street, Hagerstown, Maryland, 21742. And I'm here tonight to talk about something called six degrees of separation from Kevin Bacon. Or the people who were at the Alms House are very probably related to us somehow or other. I don't know who Kevin Bacon is, but if I ever find out, maybe I'll use it as a platform to run for mayor. To start out with, the Alms House, A-L-M-S, is also a workhouse or a poorhouse. And if you are at all interested, and I think you should be, because Pat Schooley wrote up a fantastic paper on the Alms House, which can be Googled, and is about the fourth entry down, look for the Alms House, Washington County, Maryland. And if you're at all interested in your genealogy, which is what I'm hoping for with tonight's presentation, the Miller House has a genealogy library, and the library has a Western Maryland Room, which has genealogy records, and they can advise you from there. The Miller House is in the middle of the second block of West Washington Street, and the bead shop, which is my favorite place, thank you Jenny so much for these earrings, is right down the block on your way toward the square. Now, the Alms House, there's an episode at the beginning of Downton Abbey where Bates is told by Lord Grantham that he's going to have to get his handicap in hand, or he is going to go to the workhouse, poorhouse, Alms House. We call ours the Alms House, but it was built on the British model, and none of them were pleasant. I need to also say here at the beginning that in addition to the research done by Pat Schooley, Western Maryland Historical Society, a woman who wishes to remain unnamed did 90% of the really grubby labor of going through the microfiches at the library for the archives of the local paper. And I will be attempting to read from the photographs that she made from the microfiches. They're a piece of film that you put through a reader, the precursors of, what do you call them, sticks that you put in the side of computers.
I actually remember microfiche, Mary.
Well-
I remember it from back in the day. Continue, I'm sorry.
That's because you were a teacher and you didn't have any choice. Remember the mimeograph machine?
I don't remember that far back.
About the same speed.
I don't remember that.
You're too young, Mary.
Well, that's because you didn't have 150 copies to get out.
But I have used a microfiche machine.
But the microfiche is a piece of film, and you put it through a reader, and it comes up with the same kind of data that the, whatever stick I'm trying to talk about that goes in the side of the computer now puts on a screen, and you can push buttons and read things. But then, with the microfiche, you just have to keep doing essentially the same thing with a handle that you would have done with a mimeograph machine. The thing is, I've got some, well, here, this is the bibliography for the woman who did the research. This is genuine stuff. This isn't anything where I am making comments off the top of my head. I've actually got things here. The Alms House was created to punish people. If you were a pauper, you went to the Alms House, workhouse, poorhouse, and you were forced to wear a P because you were a criminal pauper. It was also there to take vagrants and vagabonds and bankrupts off the street. Bankruptcy was a criminal offense because you'd done somebody out of goods without paying for it. And altogether, it was a jail. It was a very nasty place. Nobody really wanted to end up there, except that it slowly started to change its focus. And this is where it gets to be kind of interesting. Back in 1834, they started digging the CNO Canal, and some of the laborers took sick. And it was so bad that they had to be taken someplace where they could be attended to. So, most of these people were immigrants. No one really seems to have any names for them, but they were taken to the situation without the advantages which were afforded by the erection of the new brick edifice, the Alms House. And this is because it will long stand as a monument of the public spirit and humane intentions of the citizens of Washington County to care for these people. One comment that I would make off to the side is I tried to do investigating as to who these immigrants might have been. And the Irish had arrived in United States, what, colonial America in the 1600s, the Scots-Irish were the 1700s, the potato famine emigres were Irish from the 1840s. So I don't know who these immigrants would be. But that's where that six degrees of separation come in. It would be interesting if anybody out there really thought maybe they had some ancestor who'd been involved in the building of the canal. You might want to look at the Miller House or the Western Maryland Room because they might just have more than this. This is the archives of the paper of the time. Next, I've got blacks were also housed at the Alms House. This is a notice of the death of an aged Nigris, a Negro woman called Aunt Sukie, and formerly the property of the late James Davis of this town, meaning Hagerstown, died in the Washington County Alms House on Saturday last at the advanced age of 100 years. She claimed to have cooked several meals for dinners, excuse me, for General Washington in her younger days. And then there is the one, this place also became, well, at its end, it was infamous for being strictly a lunatic asylum, but it was also, at this time, which would have been about 1849, a lunatic asylum. The one Frederick W. Sholdan, or Sholden, who was a short time since committed to jail for further hearing upon suspicion of attempting to fire the barn of Mr. James Rao in the Sharpsburg District, was last week declared a lunatic and sent to the Alms House, from which we learn he promptly escaped.
Mary, your time has expired for this evening. And I know that you said that you probably have 15 minutes worth, so, and you will come back next month. Would you, would you be providing all of us with copies of those records, or, or no?
Well, when I'm finished.
Okay. And the other thing I just want to make sure everybody knows is that this is a subject that will be on our agenda in the spring. Previous, at a previous meeting, we asked staff to set up a tour, a public tour of the Alms House in the spring. So, I appreciate your historical context, because I have read some of the links you gave us, and all of the, all of the links I could get my hands on. I Googled it like you suggested. And it is fascinating information.
Well, what you're going to find when you Google is that this pact, this Mrs. Schooley pretty much devotes herself to the architecture, the construction, and the general purposes of the Alms House. And what I got into with the unnamed researcher were the people-
I know who that unnamed researcher is, by the way.
Of course you do.
I think she was my ninth grade French teacher.
Yes, well-
Yes, but she doesn't want to be named.
She, she's, she's whatever she is, but she desperately did not want to be named.
Well, that's fine. I appreciate the work. And what I found also interesting is that when it was built, it was on the very outskirts of town. It was out in the middle of nowhere. And when the town came to consume it, when it became surrounded by the growth of the town, then they moved up off of Pennsylvania Avenue as we know it today. It's a fascinating history.
Bellevue Farm, and it was torn down to make way for the Western Maryland Medical Center. So that's how far out of town they could push it. And I'm not quite certain, but I think that after the, the business with it becoming a grubby, truly awful situation for the lunatics, that no one could stand it, being that close to town, so they had to move it off and on someplace else to get it away from where it was. But the thing is, seriously, the people who were in there, whether they were black, as with the Nigris, or they were white, or they were what have you, if you do go into that six degrees thing, which I understand, I just don't know who Kevin Bacon is, but the six degrees things I get, were all related. And that means that those folks that were down there and died and lived and sweated and cried and all that are related to us. So we've got to take that into consideration when we're considering what we're going to do with that building. I have got at least two months' worth at this rate, and I don't really want to hand over these materials because I may want to make reference to them, and I don't have copies of them yet. At some point when I'm finished, I can bring them all in, and Donna can just run them through the Xerox machines, and she doesn't have to do the mimeograph.
Well, thank you for your efforts on that. We'll see you next month, if not before.
No, well, next month is soon. Thank you.
No problem. Now, we have city administrators' comments.
I'd just like to thank our Public Works staff and parks and utility personnel. They've all worked hard over the winter months here, both with snow removal as well as with water personnel working around the clock to help people with frozen water lines.
Indeed.
So I want to acknowledge their efforts and support for our residents.
I would echo that acknowledgement and say I saw many Facebook posts disconcerted about the lack of snow removal on the streets of Frederick, where they pay a much higher rate of tax than the folks in Hagerstown. So, good job, Public Works. Now, we will do council comments. I'll start on my left this evening with Ms. Nye, and we'll work our way down the line here.
Thank you to all employees that were out there on the streets. And I don't know who all was involved, but I will tell you, when my husband says what a great job it was, you all did something really, really good. Okay? And also, what Mary is trying to get across to council members, as well as the mayor, is the fact that, again, the Alms House is going to be coming forward, and it's whether or not we are going to have to either fight to keep it in place, or fight to have it an historic structure, which we do not have that many, that are labeled as historic, that the city has got. So that is the reason Mary will continue on with what she feels is very important to her, as well as important to others as well. And I needed to say that because, of course, she's not going to get through to where she needs to, to the end, but that's what this whole thing was about tonight with Mary. She's only given just now the basics, but it is something that is our history, and it should be preserved. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Munson?
I echo the words of Penny with regard to the good work of the city employees. Thank you for that.
Anything else? Mr. Metzner?
Saturday morning, half a block from my house, there was a water main break, and it was awful cold and nasty. And watching folks work, yeah, when you're, when you're in the city business at this time of year, when everybody really earns their money, and I would also commend everyone. This week, we had a couple major fundraisers for Rotary and for the Potter's Bowl, and I want to congratulate everybody for their success and their volunteer work. Thank you.
Mr. Brubaker?
I'd just like to refer people to my comments in the earlier budget work session and immediately preceded this. Those will be enough comments, plenty enough comments for tonight.
Mr. Alshire?
Couple of comments. The first is, I know I brought up the issue of the condition of trash along Garland Grove Boulevard last week, and I know Eric's back there now, and that was brought up. But I wanted Eric and his staff to understand that my comment certainly wasn't directed to city staff, but rather the condition to which the road exists. And I think that with a shopping center of that size, and offensive that length, that I don't think it's a reflection of city staff ability to take care of it or see it in that condition. I think it's incumbent upon us to work with the private property owners out there and come up with a solution, because I just, I don't think that the condition of that out there should be something that city staff and our crews should be addressing. There's got to be a bigger solution. I think that city staff would be fighting itself forever if, if that is our solution. And the second is, I passed some of the guys Friday evening on the Pennsylvania Avenue water line break, and I would agree and echo Lou's comments that I think it was about 10 degrees at that time. And I've been out in the field myself searching for those, those main connections, you know, and trying to find them in the dark, you know, under the snow. It's, it is no fun, and I certainly commend them. I want to make sure that, you know, whatever they need in those instances, especially as it relates to clothing and things, you know, that just should not, shouldn't be an issue because it was cold for, I think, the six or seven breaks that you had listed. And the last is, I did get some communication from folks who read or heard my comments about the Alms House and the removal of that overlay designation. I want to clarify two things. The first is, my, my inference to remove that overlay designation was to make the property more marketable, so that if a private individual or entity wanted to take on that effort, that that wouldn't preclude that from occurring. Without that overlay, it's still subject to the city's general historic designation and review process, so it doesn't remove that. And the second is, I have no objection to any private party that wants to come through this door and make any reasonable presentation to this body that would place that in some type of privately held effort for redevelopment, to consider that idea. So if there's any confusion on that, I hope that those points clear that up.
All right. Thanks. I just want to acknowledge the 20th anniversary of Just Lookin' Gallery. I really can't express enough how, what a jewel Eileen and Bob have had for 20 years now in downtown Hagerstown. And I hope that people will check them out. I know Bob has some serious health conditions, and I'm wishing him all the best, along with Eileen. But I would highly encourage everyone to check out Just Lookin' at 20 Summit Avenue, right here in downtown Hagerstown. I also want to acknowledge that we received some pretty sad news earlier this week, and that is our chief, Dietrich, our fire chief, will be retiring as of June 30th after 35 years, is that right? 35 years of service to the city of Hagerstown. So I want to recognize him and his longevity and his dedicated service to the citizens and keeping us all safe. It can often be a thankless job, I'm sure, but we really do appreciate all of your hard work and dedication to the fire department all these years. So thank you very much. And unless anyone else has any comments, we'll move on with our agenda. First, we have the minutes.
Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of- Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on January 6th, January 13th, and January 27th, 2015.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Minutes are approved. Moving on to our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Ms. Nye. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Consent agenda is approved. We have no unfinished business this evening. Our first item of new business is the introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 216 Streets and Sidewalks.
Mayor, hereby move to introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter 216 Streets and Sidewalks to the city code by deleting Articles 1 through 7 thereof and replacing the herein repealed articles with new Articles 1 through 7.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ordinance is introduced. Next up, Item B, the introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 60 Vehicles and Traffic.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter 60 Vehicles and Traffic of the city code to add a new section prohibiting the obstruction and reservation of parking spaces.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshar, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Mayor, I am, I'm going to ask again that when Chapter 60 in here is enforced, it's enforced in the future by the police with some common sense. I think in the main that this is a good piece of legislation. But I am hopeful that, for the reasons I articulated the last work session, that the police will enforce this when necessary with kid gloves. Thank you.
I believe they enforce all of our ordinances with common sense.
I hope.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the ordinance is introduced. Last but not least, the approval of the purchase of an aerial ladder truck.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of the purchase of an aerial ladder truck from Atlantic Emergency Solutions for $1,42,823 plus apparatus to fit out the vehicle for a total amount not to exceed $1,150,000 with the following funds of source, sources of funds. Funding of $1 million including the 2015 general obligation bond issue. The Pioneer Hook and Ladder Company will provide the remaining funding of up to $150,000.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Ms. Nye. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the purchase is approved. We shall be adjourned. Have a good evening.